This is the agenda for the regular board meeting today, January tenth, twenty twenty-three, the first meeting of the year. At this time, I will ask clerk to call the role.
Trustee Cap?
Here.
Uh, trustee Garcia, here. Uh, trustee Greer?
Here.
Trustee Richardson?
Here.
And trustee Claybrook?
Here. We have trustee Hodges by phone, he's on express page.
I'm here.
He's tied up, so he's gonna be telephoned by phone today. Um, it could be scheduled to put in leases and could be lead us to trustee Greer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any approvals or corrections of amendments that would help the board meet in November twenty-second, twenty twenty-two? Any corrections to be made to the minutes? If we have no correction to make, then I will ask for motions for approval of the minutes from November twenty-third, twenty twenty-two.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the December thirteenth meeting.
We need a second please.
Second.
Trustee Richardson, please take your role.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia, yes. Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Motion passed, thank you very much. So before we open the section to the public, if you would just stand up and give us your name, your reason for addressing the board. Try to keep your comments for three minutes, please. Uh, at this time, I will ask for a motion to open the meeting to the public.
Make a motion to open the meeting to the public?
A motion will flow by trustee Claybrook, can we have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Richardson, would clerk take your role?
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia, yes. Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed, the meeting is now open to the public for public comment. If anyone wants to speak from the public.
Hey, my name is John Hydu. Um, first thing I want to say is trustee Garcia, last meeting I was here about a month ago. Uh, I brought up your, your stairs in the front of your house there, and you said you had a right to make repairs and approve them to your house, and I got no problem with that at all. But my first thought when I saw, and I was the one that pointed it out to some of the residents, that my first thought is, you got Burnham to pay for the parking lot across the street from you, and now this.
Oh my God, really?
Can I? You can? Well, if you want to be really upfront with us, it happened to be the same time that they were making concrete repairs in Burnham, you know all that? If you want to be an upfront trustee, it shouldn't be too hard to do. You should have had the invoice and all from the concrete company that you paid for. If you showed it to me, you'll never hear a word from me about that again.
I didn't show you.
I thought it's open to the public.
My personal business.
I didn't, I didn't expect you to, that's fine. Uh, trustee Richardson, back in September or so, you said that Hammond was raising our water rates? So you can look forward to increasing our rates or whatever. Uh, Mr. Polk also suggested that the rates are going to be going up, I'm just asking you, uh, what and when, how much will they be going up? If you can answer me after I get done speaking, please. And, Mr. Polk, last meeting I was here, you complained and made fun of me about every time I come in here, I ask the same question over and over and over again. Well, you got me thinking, I've been coming here for five solid years now off and on. I'm all about the finances, you know that, and everybody up in the board here knows that. Still, after five years, I'm asking you again tonight, maybe you could share with everybody that's here. Where, numerically speaking, you've been saying, we're doing good, we're doing better, we're doing the best we ever have? Numerically speaking, where, where's our, not our budget, but where are we standing financially, what's our checkbook balance? You can either answer that, or you could go ahead and make fun of me again, sir, thank you.
Are there any other public comment? Are there any other public comment? I will ask for a motion to close the meeting to the public.
I make a motion to close the meeting to the public.
A motion will flow by trustee Richardson to close the meeting to the public, can we have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Claybrook, would clerk take your role?
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia, yes. Um, trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
I think the motion passed, the meeting is now closed to the public. Um, I mean, for the record, again, I will state very clearly, very distinctly, that, that, um, that parking space over there on one hundred thirty-eight street didn't have anything to do with trustees, a clerk, or anybody else. That decision was made by myself exclusively, because people have been complaining for years, I mean, down there in that area, that they didn't have any place to park. And, uh, this kind of makes a decision, I mean, I've been speaking to the board, but the board did not convince me, the board did not suggest that I do that in any way. So that was pretty much a decision that was made administratively from the top, and not any place in between.
Motion.
Now, as far as the, for the water rate goes, I don't think the trust, I mean, I don't remember trustee Richardson saying that the rates were gonna go up. I did say-
No, she didn't, she didn't.
I didn't, I did say that the rates-
She said Hammond is raising the rates, the water, yes.
And that is-
Yeah, and that's true. Um, at some point, the rate will go up again.
Can you say when?
Well, there's no plan for it this year, there's no plan for it next year, so-
So there won't be no rate increase next year?
I mean, that is correct.
Will there be any kind of sewer rate, anything concerning water or sewer, anything going up on our water bills?
No.
Nothing?
No.
Okay, because you had suggested the last meeting I was here that it would be.
Well, that's-
You just didn't know in the future, if it's not gonna be next year, good.
No.
It happens with Hammond's Chicago rates, though, Chicago's going up a bunch, we'll have to raise that.
We probably will be okay, I mean, I would think we would be okay. And also said that, uh, probably in the fall where we're gonna begin to show some of the expenditure, that what we have to spend on the sewers and the repairs that we have to make, you know, we will open that process up and, uh-
See, in fairness to us, you said, you always say that you budget enough money for the sidewalks, and you always, you can't finish the sidewalks, side streets and everything, every year we've been hearing that. At the same time, that parking lot costs thousands, how did you find the money to do that, where everybody in Burnham still needs sidewalks, that's my whole point. You can never finish the repairs on sidewalks and you put the parking lot in there.
I mean, the sidewalk repairs and that repair are from two different appropriations.
Well, it shouldn't be.
Yeah, but it has to be, that's why-
It's car related, it's part of the street.
That's why it mandated by the-
It was more campaign, we're gonna be on the road.
You never presented it before the board even, that's my whole point. Never was, I've been keeping an eye on this.
Well, this is not true.
Good.
I mean, once the board approves the appropriation for the MFT funds, I mean, no further improvement is needed, so if the board approves, uh, I mean, twenty thousand dollars or twenty-five thousand dollars for a line height under the MFT banner, under the MFT umbrella, then, I mean, it's not necessary to go back to the board, not a different, as long as we don't go over that a lot, then, I mean, then that's fine. It does not need second board approval. The board already approved.
They just didn't look good, that's what I'm saying. We're hearing all the time, I have potholes in my street in front of my house, they're this deep. That's just my house, there's all over the place because of the winter and all.
Well, we did put in a grant for Green Bay, we did not receive it this year, I mean, last year, and so hoping this year we'll have better luck, and if we do, we'll take care of it. And we've also done some street patching, we did some on Mackinac, we did some on Green Bay on the south end, I believe we did some on one hundred forty, which is the north end of here.
And we just in one hundred forty-first block.
One hundred forty-first, okay.
Yeah.
And, uh, so we working on it. We working on it, and, uh, like I've said several times before, if I tell you something that you got no word on, so now, you may not agree with me or us on certain other things, but you don't have a funny operation going in.
Where do we stand financially?
I could answer that question, we have about twelve different bank accounts.
No, 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 no.
It would be really hard for us to show you the balance of one account.
See, the audit is supposed to be the official financial condition of any business-
But the audit's not a weekly audit, it's a yearly audit, it, they take twelve accounts.
You're the finance chairman, can you tell us tonight where-
I'm telling you that we have twelve accounts.
Where do we stand, come on, John.
We have to do a balance of-
John, be simple with me.
We're in good shape, we have to do a balance of twelve accounts and say, this account's a little low this month, this account's a little high, this one got a check from the taxes.
See, I'm simple, I've been coming here five years, you've got six million in the hole, one year, you got two million, three, I'm asking for a number, and you would, still, nobody up here. You two ladies are on the finance committee, you gave me a website one time when I asked for it, I'm just looking for a number, that's all I was resident-
I mean, we have explained, we tried to explain-
See, you're gonna make fun of me again now?
I'm not making fun of you.
Why don't you know where we are?
Look, what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to explain, the six million, the twelve million, whatever you're talking about, that is not, I mean, actual, that is actual area, that is part of the police pension plan.
The audit feels that's part of our money.
Yeah, because they have to put it in there.
Well, they're, they're your source of-
I mean, because the state law changed and said now that they have to add that in, I mean, at one time, we didn't have to add that, I mean, but now we do because they changed the law back in two thousand-
See, you've gotten to know me, I've been fair, Mr. Polk, when you took over, the audit said we had a one point two million dollar surplus. I'm going by the audit, I'm bold.
I'm telling you that, I'm trying to explain to you that in two thousand sixteen, they changed the law in Springfield, and they said that police pension appropriations and those funds that have to be calculated, I mean, until the village's finances.
It was part of the finances in oh-five, I saw the audit.
I'm gonna say this, man, we gonna move on. I'm gonna say this, man, we gonna move on, so-
So you, you won't give me a number then, I'm asking for a number is all.
If you were a, I mean, if Officer Coos was a full-time police officer, he was full-time. And so he's an older man, just like I am a little bit older, okay, so if he married a lady that was twenty-five years old, then the police pension fund would have to project over the next fifty years that she might live, and they gotta put the money in there for her. I mean, with her life expectancy, I mean, plus the three percent cost increases every year, and those things drive up their deficit, I mean, it drives it up. And also, the policemen that work here for a period of time, if they work here for five years or ten years or whatever it is, then they decide to leave and go to another town because they want to make more money. I mean, those pension funds have to be drawn down now, and they're taking out the account, and because they take them out the account, then that make those actuaries go higher, I mean, because there's less money there.
Do you know where you stand financially personally? You know what your checkbook balance is in your checkbook?
Okay, so, and I'll end on-
You're, you're running our money is what I'm saying, you won't tell us what's going on.
I told you it's twelve accounts.
I'm not, John, John, I'm talking to the mayor.
Okay, so-
You won't tell us.
I have an exception for the public.
I mean, we gonna move on.
Well, and, and you know what, and I, I'm just getting tired of people talking about my, my damn stairs, I have a right to make repairs to my house, I paid for those. It was just a coincidence that it happened while they were working, you know, we were working on the sidewalks. Do you really think I would be stupid enough to use-
I don't know.
Well, then, then you have a problem.
I think you've got enough guts.
You know, oh yeah, right.
There's no one here.
Right, I, 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 I like, I do not like to be behind bars, that much I can tell you.
But you're using those stairs without railings, and you're in charge of the department, how do you do that?
You driven by, like, if you're, twice a day that you drive by and check on everything because you have nothing better to do?
No, it's not us.
You should be thanking me for watching the village and keeping an eye on what's going on.
But you don't need to drive by twice a day.
Ask the mayor how many texts that I send him about stopping the village, I'd say.
Sure, Mr. Polk, see, my problem with the railing, couple houses down from me, they had a swimming pool about two, three years ago, somebody from the village made them take that pool down because it had no railing or no fencing. She was required to abide by the code, and yet, the trustees aren't.
You're held to a different standard.
Okay, well, let me set this again.
I'm being fair.
And we gonna move on.
Sure.
And we gave you extra time tonight.
You still haven't answered me.
We gave you the extra time tonight, so we're not, uh, I mean, I did not shut you, I mean, I'm with the three minutes, you went over three minutes, private talk, file, six minutes.
No, thank you for that.
And, uh, so, um, so we are trying to be as cooperative and supportive as we can of the thing that you're asking of us, but sometimes we give you answers, and you always step down.
You're just spending an awful lot of money in Burnham, and I just ask where we are, and you don't know.
Let me say, and let me say that, um, that I am not, I'm not gonna do anything that's gonna cause me to go to Minnesota or wherever that jail is, it's not gonna happen. Now, some people would like for me to, I mean, to get in trouble, but I'm a little bit smarter than that, and I'm from Mississippi, we didn't go like that, I thank you very much.
Mayor, is it fair for Public Works to plow that, to plow that parking spot in front of Mrs. Chavez's and Mrs. uh-
I'm sorry?
Garcia's house, is it fair for Public Works to plow in front of that, uh, parking lot that was put in front of Mrs. Chavez's and Mrs. uh, Garcia's home?
Well, if it was put there by the village, if it was put there by the village, I mean, it's village property, the pathway actually belongs to the village technically, so-
But wouldn't that mean in a sense that you would have to do everybody that's got asphalt in the parkway? Like Mr. Patridge, and I've got a concrete parking spot in front of my house, too, wouldn't you have to do everybody that only hold true for trustees and clerks?
I blame Mr. Patrick, probably the, it's part of the state of Illinois, I believe.
No, that's on one hundred thirty-second, not that front, I'm talking about right across from my own. How do you justify that?
I mean, well, if it needs, um, if it needs plowing, I would have a problem with it.
Would you do my driveway too? The concrete pad?
I think you could take it, y'all, Mr. Patrick is old.
I'm old too, I can barely walk, you seen me walking with a cane, I can't fly anymore.
And who knows, we might decide to bless you one day, we don't have, we don't discriminate, okay?
Cool.
Okay.
I'll go into that.
So in the mayor's report, uh, I would like to say that, uh, again, we haven't had much snow this season, but we are asking if the people was, uh, if they was, uh, move your, your inoperative vehicles off the street so we can get access to the streets or we can clean them. And, uh, and later this month, we're gonna have a community to be in, that'll be at the community center, you will have more time, the people will have more time to, you know, to answer your questions, depending on, I mean, but again, we're not gonna tell you something that you just want to hear if it's not true, and, uh, and I will not, I mean, tell something that's not true, that, I mean, just to please somebody, and if I tell you something, that's, hey, you got no word on it. Um, and also, we asking the people if you would help us to keep the community clean, I see a lot of trash and stuff up down the street, and so, then we'll probably work to the hallway cleaning up, so, if you were cleaning up the parkway right in front of your house, that wouldn't upset us too much, and also we appreciate that. Uh, clerk is not here, uh, but we gonna move on, a couple of works in building, uh, trustee Claybrook. Trustee Greer.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you for coming out this evening. I, um, there were a hundred and eighty new laws passed in the state of Illinois, and I would just, uh, just, um, announce a few here. House Bill number thirty-seven seventy-two, there would be no cars for, uh, carjacking victims. Uh, the, the, there would be no car, I'm sorry, there would be no fees for, uh, carjacking victims' cars. They will not be on the hook for tickets, so if you get a ticket, if your car was, uh, carjacked, and there was some damages that accumulated, you will, you will not be on the hook for the tickets. Senate Bill thirty-one twenty, ladies can have time off, if they have a miscarriage, they can receive ten days off, but it will be unpaid leave. Senate Bill thirty-six sixty-seven, electronic order of protection, to better protect survivors, this law allows anyone to file for protective order at any time, you can do it by email, or you can do it online, but if you care to go in person, that's your option, but again, it's electronic order of protection. Senate Bill thirty-six sixteen, to combat discrimination in the workplace. Traits associated in race, such as hair textures and hairstyles, such as braids, locks, or twists, there should be no discrimination with the, with the hair. That's, that is called to combat discrimination in the workplace. House Bill fifty-two fifty-four, this law requires your health insurance plan to cover medically necessary hormone therapy treatments for, such as hysterectomies. So that's called helping hand avoid affordable, uh, treatment. And House Bill fifty-three oh-four, registration, uh, for your vehicle, for seniors, seniors' vehicle registration. This law reduces the vehicle registration for seniors from twenty-four dollars now to ten dollars. But anyone that wants, and I just got a call about this the other day, anyone that wants to have, um, have this benefit, you have to first contact, um, the Secretary of State, and then there's a, um, a process to follow. But again, the fees will, will be reduced from twenty-four dollars to ten dollars. Amazon will, has announced they will be doing job cuts, I know a lot of our community members have jobs at Amazon, and McDonald's also announced they will be doing some job cuts soon. Just a reminder to everyone that going township transportation operates on a curb-to-curb service for seniors sixty years of age and older. If anyone would like to know more about intellectual disability services, and there are some wonderful services out there for the, uh, intellectual disability, leave your name with, um, our personnel at the office, and I will get back with you with some very important information. Is there, I don't know if anyone, everyone knows, Reverend James Meek, and a lot of our community members belong to Salem Baptist Church. His last sermon was last Sunday, he had been a minister for over forty years, and it was one of the largest black churches in the city of Chicago.
Is that kind of good to know?
Uh, they do a bit too late. Fisher Price has recalled his rock and play sleepers, there has been over one hundred infant deaths, so, uh, with this Fisher Price rock and play sleepers. And I'd just like to leave, this is, again, happy new year to each and everyone, and I would like to leave just a few positive words for the new year. Number one, do the best that you can. Two, do what you can with what you have, where you are. Number three, it's never too late to be what you might have been. And number four, if you can dream it, you can do it. This one, uh, small positive thought in the morning, it can change your whole day. And last, always, always, find the opportunity to make someone smile. Happy new year to each and everyone.
Couple of works in building, trustee Claybrook.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Discussion of consideration of and taking action to approve or not approve on the hire of Elias Capels for the Public Works Department.
Trustee Claybrook, now this would be, um, I mean, effective back to D seven fourteen.
We did approve him once before, though.
I know, but that, that's the actual number we're taking that. Now, go ahead, sir.
I make a motion and taking action to approve on the hire of Elias Capels for the Public Works Department.
Yeah, and the question from the board. Trustee Claybrook has made a motion. Capels, he had a second please.
Second.
Second by trustee Richardson, would clerk take your role?
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia, yes. Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
That would reflect back to D seven fourteen. Anything else, trustee?
Sorry.
I forgot Hodges was on the radio.
I mean, in order to revolution and plan, trustee Garcia.
Pretty deep.
Good evening.
Discussion of consideration of and taking action to approve or not approve an ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash zero dash zero, um, dash O dash zero zero one, an ordinance, an ordinance establishing and adopting fees to be charged for fire rescue and fire department services provided by the Village of Burnham Fire Department. By amending and adding Article Six Fire Rescue and Fire Department Services Fees to Chapter Thirty-eight Fire Prevention and Protection of the Code of Ordinances, Village of Burnham.
Okay, so, I'm gonna have the attorney to make a announcement. Mayor, members of the board, trustees, I'd like to introduce Laura Daley from, uh, the solution, I'm forgetting the first name, from our company.
So my name is Laura Daley, I'm with Central Billing Solutions, I'm actually the president, um, so it is women-owned, um, we also, uh, work with Buzz Ambulance, um, Central Dispatch as well, so, most of our services that have been provided to the village for decades now, um, just sort of continue on. We know how hard the fire department works and what they do and the services that they offer right now, um, they truly go unpaid or without any sort of collection. So the goal of our services is not to cost the village any more money, it's to basically make money that's already on the table by insurance companies. So every time they respond to an accident, uh, or if they have to respond to a structure fire, where their services are already being utilized now, uh, the goal is just to bill insurances, not to balance bill residents for anything, so there's no cost to the village residents. Um, it truly is just a smart move to make for any village, um, a lot of the surrounding towns are already currently doing it, uh, it's not gonna make, um, it's, it's not gonna make the village tons of money, that's, that's never the goal of this, um, the services provided will just basically be, uh, paid, uh, the amounts that are on the ordinance, and, um, like I said, insurance companies only, so, um, if anyone has any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
What's your name again?
Laura Daley.
Anyone have a question?
No questions? Okay, what kind, what kind of insurance, is it a home insurance or a-
Uh, sir, it's the bar to ask the question.
Yeah, I realize, but you should be asking some questions, come on, man.
Okay, I thank you.
I'll leave, I'll, I'll leave, but it behooves me to have no questions for this lady who comes to me.
You proceed, sir.
It's crazy.
I'm watching who ordinances-
I know, or, maybe they're discussing behind the door.
Dash O, dash zero zero one, an ordinance establishing and adopting fees to be charged for fire rescue and fire department services provided by the Village of Burnham, fire department by amending and airing Article Six Fire Rescue and Fire Department Services Fees, Chapter Thirty-eight Fire Prevention and Protection of the Code of Ordinances, Village of Burnham.
Okay, so they have, um, a motion will flow by trustee, uh, Garcia to approve this ordinance. Speed, so, would we have a second please? First of all, the board doesn't have a question, would we have a second please?
I'll second.
Second by trustee Cap, take your role.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia, yes. Trustee Greer?
Then.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Good motion passed, thank you. See?
Discussion of consideration of and taking action to approve or not approve on the new upper application by Mira's Gaming Cafe, LLC, a gaming cafe establishment. The location would be one thirty-seven fifty-five Burnham Avenue, Unit E, Burnham, Illinois.
This, uh, property has been vacant for about twelve or thirteen years, so it's, uh, good to see, uh, some new development there, getting online, so, that would have to, uh, support the tax base at what time, so, um, um, so, I think it'd be a good positive thing for the village of Burnham. Would you like to say anything?
No, I'd like to thank everybody in the village, really, it took a long time for me to finish that building, uh, going through the, uh, crash time and, uh, then some other problems, uh, from the, uh, wetland behind us, then the corona came, but, uh, thanks God, you know, finally, the building is finished and it's ready now to produce and, uh, employ a lot of people from, uh, the Village of Burnham. We're gonna make sure that everybody gonna be working there from the village.
Thinking about whether trustee, if we wanted to work on the ground, right, and that was in two thousand seven, hey.
Yeah, yeah, it took me a long time, and a lot of losses with taxes paid every year, so I appreciate, you know, your patience, everybody, thank you very much.
Does the board have any questions?
So this, um, this is one of the, of the buildings, right, this is just for one of them?
One units.
One of the units?
One of the units, yeah.
And, and that's gonna be yours, your business?
Yeah, it's gonna be my business.
And then the other ones are probably gonna have other, different-
They are tenants, and, uh, today I received, we have Dominus Pizza, the mayor knows they are working.
Vehicle in there.
Yeah, there is that convenience store also, and today, uh, I had, I have, uh, a credit application from a flower shop, that they wanna come there, where they have a place, and, um, I'm working with, um, a guy who owns like three restaurants, Phyllis State and Hamburgers, so I might really do it there too, so, um, I am concentrating on getting retail stuff, mostly there.
So it's probably a little challenging, man, to get a Jimmy John, right?
Hopefully, I, I already sent it, I already emailed.
We have the ordinance, we have the fees, but we think that we're, we're gonna create this.
Okay, that, that was my question, that was your question.
Okay.
Yeah, so I make a motion to approve, uh, the upper application- Yeah, so I make a motion to approve, uh, the liquor application, the liquor license application by Mira's Gaming Cafe, a gaming cafe establishment located at one thirty-seven fifty-five Burnham Avenue.
So, you made the motion, trustee Garcia?
Yes.
So, we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by trustee Cap, protect the role.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia, yes. Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, I'm looking. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Discussion of consideration of and taking the application to approve or not approve
under new liquor application by Luzy Burnys Maywood, a gaming cafe establishment, the location is twenty-four sixty-eight State Street, Burnham, Illinois.
Excuse me, it's twenty-four sixty-eight.
Twenty-four sixty-eight.
Two-four-sixty-eight.
Correct.
Yeah, it's, yeah, she's twenty-four sixty-eight.
You don't have a copy of that.
I have a, a quick statement. People might not know this, but the state of Illinois requires those gaming establishments to have a liquor license. They're only allowed businesses with liquor licenses to have gambling or gaming license. Doesn't make any sense, but that's the way the state set it up. So, I mean, you should be able to let them have gaming without a liquor license, but the state of Illinois requires liquor licenses for gaming establishments, but that's nothing we can do about it. It just seems odd.
Okay. Then a question from the board.
So, this is a new, a new business? A new business?
Yes.
It's not open. Um, I make a motion to approve the liquor application by Luzy Burnys Maywood, a gaming cafe establishment, and the location is twenty-four sixty-eight State Street, Burnham, Illinois.
They have a motion on the floor to approve a license for gaming, then Maywood LLC.
I'll second it all, so.
And then by trustee Cap. I didn't know if it was Luzy or Lucky.
Lucky.
How many, type, typo there, too.
Is it on U-C-K-Y?
Oh, U-C-K-Y?
I'm sorry.
How do you spell it?
L-U-C-K-Y. Lucky.
Let me conversion to Lucky Burnys.
Correct.
At twenty-four sixty-eight State Street.
I may, I may.
Make a conversion that, in your motion.
So, um, I make a motion for, um, to approve the liquor application for Lucky Burnys Maywood, a gaming cafe establishment, and the location is twenty-four sixty-eight State Street.
Would you spell that Lucky?
Lucky is L-U-C-K-Y.
I think, and I'll second it.
Okay, well, a quick take, roll, please, please.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia, yes. Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Motion passed, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, I would ask for a motion to table number four. The, uh, the spokesmen are not here this evening, and they wanna give a better presentation as to what they're gonna do. I mean, that's involved a bit more than a restaurant and gaming, they got a big operation there, guess that they gotta clean up, you know, the yard and, and quite a bit, and I think they'll also have some videos to show us next time, so, we're gonna try to do that on twenty-four, January twenty-four, so, could we make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we table item number four.
Okay, so, when you read that, trustee Garcia, make the motion table, and we'll go to seven, okay?
Um, so I make a motion to table, um, approving the liquor application by La Isla Bonita, a restaurant bar and grill, and the location is one-four-zero-zero-zero, South Chrisbaum Drive in Burnham.
And trustee Cap made it, made a second, okay, so, okay, proceed.
That's, that's all I have. Oh, I.
No. Yeah, third.
Oh, third, sorry, sorry. Uh, trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia, yes. Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Item is table until January twenty-four.
And, um, and just one more thing, so we, we had a job fair last week, again, and we had a really good turnout, we had close to a hundred people show up, and I think two weeks before that, we had a job fair, we also had close to a hundred people show up, so a lot of those, um, I, over fifty percent of them were made job offers, so, you know, waiting to see if they'll accept them, and, you know, so forth, so forth.
They make a big, they make a bad.
They, they make them best down, and I will get a job. Okay? It depends. The job loss, the model winner, right there. All right, then, trustee Garcia, and we find it, trustee Cap?
Good evening, everyone. Discussion of consideration of and taking action on the renewal of workman's compensation insurance premium policy period of January first of twenty-three through January first twenty-four of the Technology Insurance Company for the total annual amount of a hundred and twenty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Last year's annual premium was seventy-nine thousand and seventy cents, so I'd like to make a, a motion to approve the renewal of the workman's insurance premium policy for one-one-twenty-three to one-one-twenty-four of the Technology Insurance Company for the total annual amount of a hundred and twenty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to approve the workman's insurance, and motion was made by trustee Cap, could we have a second, please?
A second.
Second by trustee Claybrook, protect the role.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia, yes. Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
My motion, my motion passed, proceed, trustee Cap, number two.
Discussion of and consideration of and taking action on the Village of Burnham Insurance Liability Renewals with totals of three-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand, three-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars, and the authorization is a village, a, a, a village clerk to sign said insurance renewal in agreement. Last year's premium was three-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand, four-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars. So, I will read all the different companies.
Oh.
The next up, the, yeah, okay. So, I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, renew the insurance, um, renewals, and have the village clerk sign the insurance renewal in agreement.
There's another motion on the floor by trustee Cap to approve the Village of Burnham liability renewal of three-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand, three-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars.
A second.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia, yes. Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Okay, so the companies that make up that amount, the first one is Hudson Insurance, they're a hundred and seventeen thousand, eight-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars, they provide the property crime, inland rain, and general automotive liability. The next company is QBE Specialty Insurance, that's seventy-two thousand, three-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars, they provide law enforcement. Greenwich Insurance is seventy-four thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars, they cover the public officials, the DNO, and the EPLI. The last one is the Kin Sale Insurance, which is the excess liability, that one's fifty-three thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars, and the last one is the cyber liability, that's, uh, traveler's casualty, that's six thousand, nine-hundred-and-forty-four dollars, and the total was three-hundred-and-eighty-seven, uh, thousand and three-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars.
Thank you, now, everything that the village, the taxpayer, the family, the necessary that we have to do to keep the village running, we gotta keep them going, and show them paid for different things, so.
And I, I could, since I have, whatever, it, it just went up a little bit, some went up, some went down.
Just some balance, man.
Yes.
Item number three.
So, discussion of consideration of and taking action on authorizing the payment of this month's bills, so I'd like to make a motion to authorize the payment of this month's bills.
There's a motion on the floor by trustee Cap to pay the bills for this month, could we have a second, please?
Second.
Second by trustee, trustee Richardson, protect the role.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia, yes. Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Just getting tired of seeing you.
Motion passed, thank you, is that your trustee cap?
Yeah, that's all I have, thank you.
I probably need to tell it to trustee Richard.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And Happy New Year to everyone.
Thank you.
Uh, on the twenty-first of January, from twelve to four, we'll be hosting, uh, annual or monthly COVID-nineteen vaccination clinic. There will also be, uh, so, and assistance, those that need help with, um, electric, gas, and water, which is up under FIDA, so you can come Saturday the twenty-first here at the village hall between twelve PM and four PM, and, uh, fill out the necessary paperwork for assistance if you need it.
Okay, what, what are the times?
Twelve to four.
And it's gonna be here?
Yes. And that's it.
Thank you, trustee Richardson, for having reported your information, Park and Recreation, trustee Hodges.
Good evening. Uh, I wanna thank everyone for coming out and helping, uh, helping us with the toy giveaway, gave away toys, or just helping us out, just being there volunteering, or just sending out a prayer, we really appreciate you guys for, um, helping out, even made a lot of gifts, made a lot of people happy around Burnham, delivering toys, I think it was a really good day, um, got some pictures and things that, um, put up, um, hopefully, you know, put up, you got the link for the website, so, so, I have a face that you guys got, and I just wanna say thank you all so much for just showing so much love to the village, and one thing I always say, because, you know, we've done it together, we really showed that for the rest of the year, so I just wanna say thank you guys so much, I wanna wish you guys a Happy New Year, and we decided what we have coming up this year, I'm working with, um, Chi- Chi- Deloitte Park District, we got another thing coming up in February, open jump, and I'll have, just, I'm just down the rabbit hole, hopefully, there, there's some dreams, maybe, you know, catering, so, just come out, and, so, guys, have a great night, have a great, thank you guys so much, thank you for your patience, we're now in special traffic, along with that, on the upside, so, uh, thank you, that's it.
All right, thank you very much, thank you for your report and information, and that presentation of petitions, communications, and the board, of that's my question. I would like for a moment of silence, we had two deaths this week, and the village brought up two deaths. Is there any unfinished business? Uh, new business, uh, we have to, uh, before we make the motion, we have to go into executive session, and so when we have to go into executive session, if, uh, disband of employees, or terminate employees, or dealing with any type of delegation, and the things of that kind, we have to go into executive session, which means that we have to go in the back, if you wish to stay here until we come out, and, and they'll talk, you want to get back out, and we have some meetings, or that now, I have to make a motion to go into executive session, and we have to leave this room and go in the back.
Should we do that first item first, though? I mean, it's, yeah, it's, yeah, you keep, yeah, yeah.
Well, you can do it either before or after. Let's go again, please, there'll be some things you'll discuss, perhaps, in executive session, I'll check.
Oh, okay, we'll go after that.
Okay. So, just time, I will ask a motion to, um, to, uh, go into, we need to close this by noon. You need to close the room or meeting. Close it for that. Go to, go to executive session, then you, you gotta take minutes, the executive session. So, I'd like to make a motion that we go into executive session at this time.
I'll second it.